Hello, everyone. This is a meeting of the Greenfield School Committee here in Greenfield, Massachusetts. We are at the John Zahn Community Center at 35 Pleasant Street. Today is Wednesday, December 11th, 2019, and the time is 6:38 approximately. Is there anyone in the audience that is recording today? All right. GCTV is recording and broadcasting live. Thank you, GCTV. Secretary Ekstrom, can we please have a roll call?
Member Hollins.
Here.
Member Martin.
Here.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Member Karen.
Here.
Member Ekstrom, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, so let's start off with approval of draft minutes. There are four different draft minutes in the packet today, so we're looking for motions to enter these into the record. Let's start with September 9th. Susan?
Move to approve the minutes of Monday, September 9, 2019.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Member Karen. Any conversation on that? Member Hollins?
At the bottom of the first page, the third bullet, we were talking about, we voted to talk about personal costs, and the third bullet just says, "Costs to City for Insurance, Retirement for School Staff." I think that discussion was the increased cost. We know that the city pays retirement benefits, but I think that whole discussion was about what was the level of the increased cost, not just some minor detail. And above that, under the budget update, I don't disagree with the content, but it says, "We will use $400,000 in revolving funds to balance." We don't really use the $400,000 to balance, we just use $400,000 of revolving funds in our budget. It's not like we create a budget and then balance it. So I just thought it was a little unclear what we... I think, so my recommendation is, we'll include using $400,000 in revolving funds, period, eliminate "to balance."
Where is that?
The second, first page, under 3A, second, first bullet.
Is anyone opposed to that?
And to add the word "increased cost to city."
Okay, just a second.
Just to clarify, that was discussing $400,000 additional in revolving funds. It wouldn't be accurate if you said, "The budget will include $400,000 in revolving funds," period, because we had already budgeted much more than that previously. So I support clarifying the intent, but that is not the full amount of revolving funds in the budget.
So should it be corrected to say, "We'll include using an additional 400?" Okay, thank you.
Sure. Everyone okay with that?
So we'll include using an additional 400K. Okay. And then below that, I recommend including the word "increased" on the third bullet, the increased cost of retirement and insurance.
On, okay, at the bottom of the page, one, two, three. Cost to City for Increased Insurance. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Is there a motion to approve minutes from September 11th, 2019?
Move to approve the minutes of Monday, September 11th, 2019.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Anything to say here? Member Hollins?
There's a motion. Is this the, are these the minutes where you have a motion? Excuse me. One second, I'm sorry. I have no correction to these minutes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, that is unanimous. And is there a motion to approve minutes from September 16th, 2019?
So moved.
Moved by Member Ekstrom.
Second.
Second, Member Hollins. Any conversation here? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Motion to approve minutes from November 18th. Is there a second? Or I move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Any conversation here?
Aye. Actually, yes. But I'm happy to have someone prove me wrong.
Yeah, just be sure to speak into the mic.
I'm happy to have someone prove me wrong. I don't see a vote to approve the tentative agreement and move it along anywhere. I don't see a motion to approve our tentative agreement for Unit C and move it along to the next steps anywhere. I could be wrong. I'm happy to, I'm not happy to be wrong, but I could be wrong, but I don't see it in the minutes.
We came back now after a session to do that.
We did. But I don't see it.
There's another packet. Do we want to double check in there?
I think it was an earlier date, wasn't it, November 13th?
It may have been. That's what I was going to say, that...
So we haven't seen those minutes, is what we're saying, because they would have been presented tonight.
Pardon?
So those minutes are not included.
We do not have those minutes from the meeting on the 13th.
Well, we can also move to table these and double check. But we had, we see the, a record here of the draft minutes of the 13th. Pardon? Yes?
The minutes of the 13th include Unit C contract.
They do.
Perfect. You just double check that?
We don't have, we don't have.
Got it.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm, because...
I do see that in the meeting document section on page three of the document in front of us.
And the November 18th, we...
That's why they're not included.
Yep, yep, we did.
Ah, all right.
That's why they were included on the 18th.
Correct, thank you, I appreciate it.
Got it. Okay. Any other, yep, Ameron?
Under the Transportation Cost Savings Proposal...
Oh, please, thank you.
Under the Transportation Cost Savings Proposal, going through from page one to page two, there is no indication that there was a conversation on procurement practice, and the discussion was, had taken place when I asked how the vans were being procured.
Okay, so at the bottom of the bulleted list on page two, you would like to include a discussion on procurement?
It would have been under the, under the bullet points, Susan? Right, under the bullet points. That there was a discussion on procurement, and the procurement was, it was sole source, and that's how the vans were purchased.
Is that accurate?
Could we check the minute?
Mayor, could you entertain a motion to go back to the tape to include specifically reference the discussion on procurement, so that can be captured in the minutes?
Sure, that would be fine.
That's a good idea, great.
Shorts on film.
Yeah. So...
I would move to table the minutes of November 18th.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll review procurement on that.
I had another issue.
If you want to just forward it to the superintendent, because it's table now, so we can wait. If it's a language thing. Okay. Thank you, everybody. So moving on to public comment, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment today? I see one person. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Two people. Okay, great. If you could just come on up to the mic, I believe that it's turned on, either one of you, it's fine. You have three minutes to speak. If you can state your name and address, please, for the record. And can someone keep the time? Katie, Karen?
Are we looking at me?
Love it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Paul DiMarco, I'm with the Massachusetts Teachers Association, I'm a resident of Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. I'm addressing the school committee, requesting that the school committee recommends the town council to approve the mayor's appropriation request, but that the town council fully fund the Unit C contract out of existing city reserves. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to back up what he said, because I think IAs definitely deserve a good contract instead of what they're getting now. Because I'd like to see it go forward, so it's done by the end of the year, if possible. Because I'd like to have myself, have myself going out on a good, good right foot.
Thank you. And for the record, that was Counselor Burnson. Burn? Could you state your address for the record? Thank you.
81 Barton Road, Greenfield, Mass.
Thanks a lot. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the committee reports. Yeah.
I would like to move to bring our first two agenda items, one and two, to this part of the conversation, so we can allow those folks to go home.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, so we'll move on to business item number one, and then we will go back to reports. Yes?
I'd like to move to approve the Boston Science Museum field trip, as requested.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Do we want to hear from anyone? I think it's pretty cool. I wouldn't mind just like a very quick little blurb about it. Sounds like everyone's all business this evening, which is cool. So we did receive information in our packets. As you can tell, it sounds like people think it's a wonderful opportunity. Please give us a very brief description of what's going on, and then we'll continue on with our vote.
Okay. We'll be doing an overnight trip to the Boston Museum of Science. Students will have the opportunities to do, have hands-on experience with various exhibits, to see IMAX presentation, as well as a Planetarium presentation, and students will get to sleep in the exhibit halls, which should be a really cool experience.
I'll just add, this is a really, I think, coming from where I've been, I initiate a lot of these different trips, overnight trips. They kind of create a buzz for groups coming up, classes coming up. So I think that what he's doing is pioneering something here that we're going to have that's going to be exciting for kids to look forward to.
Cool. I mean, I'm excited. It's a real night at the museum. I would sleep in the shark room, just saying.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I just want to clarify for folks that may be listening at home and not looking at the information in front of them, this is for the seventh graders, and they're going in two different groups. So half of the seventh grade will be going on one trip, and half will be going on another trip. You've made a commitment to at least a ratio of one chaperone for every five students, but you may have more by the time that the trip comes around. And mostly, this is made possible by our Expanded Learning Time Grant, which really aligns with the goals of what they're doing. And what really excites me is that every seventh grader by the end of this will have shared a common experience, but also there are many students that wouldn't otherwise have an opportunity to go to the Museum of Science in Boston, but especially to have that kind of overnight opportunity is, is a, something that I think students can look forward to, get excited about, sort of a social and learning opportunity at the same time, and that will bring the class together and continue to create that community that's been building. So thank you.
The other thing I'd add, too, is that the PTO, we're so happy to jump on this. I mean, they already gave us the deposit for our transportation, so, I mean, as soon as they heard about it, they were all over this. And so it's nice to have that support as well. That's it. Thank you.
Super, thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments, anything? Member Hollins?
I wanted to say, I think it's terrific, and I think I read recently that the Boston Museum of Science is one of the top-rated science museums in the country, just got some award or something. But what I wanted to say is that the state has guidelines for overnight trips, and a couple years ago, we revised our policy to align with the state requirements, what parents have to be told, and all sorts of things. It's all outlined in our policy with guidelines. And I noticed that when the, recently, the Spanish department was requesting their trip, they had a form this year, and it had every requirement of the policy in the state, and then they filled it in. And this is a great brochure, but since the trip is in April, is it, it doesn't answer all the questions of our policy on, you know, parents, are parents going to be told this, and is the bus going to do that? And anytime we take children overnight, anywhere, responsibility is huge, even if it's fabulous. So I did notice in your write-up, you're aligning with the, you're aligning with the turnaround practice, which is great, but I would feel more comfortable if I knew you were aligning with our specific policy when you take children out overnight.
Superintendent?
So the form that was created this year is an internal form that's used for planning, and the folks organizing this trip did complete and fill out that form. That form came to me as part of our review, and then we provided that information to you. So I can assure you that we've reviewed those practices and policies as part of bringing this forward. We don't necessarily include it. Essentially says, "I've reviewed the overnight guidelines, I've reviewed," and it's an assurance that those steps have been taken as part of the pre-planning before it can come to the school committee. So that has been undertaken and has been done.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't know if there's a shark room, but the dinosaurs are amazing. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. So thank you. Have a wonderful time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next item, number two. This is a Greenfield Middle School turnaround progress update. And I do not have a slideshow configuration set up for you, is that okay?
I, I will do it the old-school way of holding up pieces of paper for you.
We have them all in our packets, and I'm very sorry about that. I realized it last minute. There's this particular computer that we need to use in order to make it all go, so...
Is it, I want to, no, I'm Lynn Dole, I'm...
Oh, yeah, if you could, yeah.
And so I should do it standing?
You're welcome to stand. It just, it's helpful to speak into the microphone.
Okay. We all have the in-ears. Okay.
Yeah.
Viewers at home can visualize this.
One was just given to GCTV, and, you know, Felipe is pretty phenomenal about trying to ensure that the viewers at home are able to see what's going on, so I think he's working on that, too.
Just a reminder, we post our packets online as well, so if you're looking at home, you can go to the School Committee tab on the GPSK12.org page, and you can see everything we're talking about tonight.
All right.
It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Lynn Dole, the principal at Greenfield Middle School, and it's truly an honor. I saw you in September, and it's delightful to be sharing this work with you, supported by a wonderful team of educators, some of the school council members are here, and parents, and some of my students, to speak to our progress with the turnaround plan. So I think I'd begin by framing it and saying, there are so many wonderful things happening at Greenfield Middle School. Thank you for approving the field trip. I think that's a great example of educator initiative and creating a sense of community. The background, as you may know, is that last year, Greenfield Middle School was identified as needing targeted assistance, and the state identified that need, and our educators worked last spring to develop a turnaround plan. I view my role as the principal as implementing that plan. Some of the members of the turnaround planning team are here, and I don't know, Mr. Browning or Mr. Tucker, do you want to speak a little bit about the process that got us the turnaround plan that really is our roadmap?
Sure. Turn him to sit over there. Okay. Yeah, I can just tell you a little bit, and some of this is a little bit of review from when we met with you last spring. So after we were identified as a school that needed this assistance, we were, there was a team from the state, let's see, System of Support, SSOS, that were assigned to us, and they really were a team of coaches, and that's what they've done throughout this whole process. So they started by helping us identify where we needed to go, how we put this plan together. They worked with Ms. Fenimore to set up some meetings with some community stakeholders as well, so we can get input. Then they helped us to put together a team, we had 16 of us, that were both administrators and teachers, to really get down to the nuts and bolts of this plan. And then from there, we presented it to the state, and over the summer, they approved, and then came Lynn.
So thank you.
That's kind of, yeah.
Thank you.
And if there's anything more?
I think that's fine for now. I'll bring you back up. Thank you so much. So the turnaround plan has four main practices, that I feel like all of the work we do weaves them together. Shared leadership is a really important component of that. Intentional practices for instruction, student support, and, and I would say most importantly is school climate and culture. When I think about the school climate and culture, I think about it being a welcoming, inclusive place for everyone. I felt welcomed by the school community, and we want it to be a place where our parents feel comfortable coming, where our students obviously feel comfortable coming, and where our educators are proud and enjoy their work. So I'd like to share some, some data that's, I think, really positive, that our teacher attendance is already showing some really positive, you know, 36% reduction in teacher absences in the first trimester comparing this year and last year. But really, the meat of it is, is the work that our educators do together and with our students. So I'd like to invite Kara McCollgan, as one of our teachers, to just share what that looks like for her.
So I'm Kara McCollgan. I'm a fifth grade teacher at the middle school. This is my third year at Greenfield Middle School, but I've been in this district for nine years. And so this year, what we've done is totally re-establish our approach to teaching, and we've done that in kind of two major ways. One of the things that we've done is we're piloting co-teaching, which has completely reinvigorated the way that we're approaching teaching. We are working in a classroom with two adults, which, the benefits are exponential. One of them is student-teacher ratio. There are a lot of children in our classrooms, not anything extreme, but there's, you know, I have 20 students sitting in front of me, and I want to meet all of their needs. And so what we're doing is we're using this inclusion classroom model to, to be able to show, or to work with smaller numbers of students. So my co-teacher and I, the special ed teacher and I, are teaching math together, and we have lots of different models that we're working with. We actually are doing professional development, which has been super empowering to kind of have somebody to bounce off of and work next to, and I'm learning from her, her differentiation skills, and so we're doing some really powerful work with co-teaching in two of our math classes. The other thing that we're doing is team teaching in fifth grade, which is a kind of, the way that I like to think about it, is this great bridge between that elementary model, you're with your teacher all day long, you're really close-knit class, which is great for the little guys, but as we move into sixth grade, they have four teachers. It's a lot of adults to get to know, and so one of the things we're trying to, to show them is that, you know, you can move between these classes, we can be structured and prepared and still, you know, be able to move about a building in a really safe and responsible way. And so we're, we're trying to work hard on, on giving them that, that movement as a bridge to that sixth-grade-four-teacher model. And so these two changes have really dramatically changed how I'm approaching teaching. I can focus on my content area, so I'm doing math and science, my co-teacher is ELA and social studies, and we can have these really driven conversations within our teams of those content areas. So it's been really, really powerful to kind of have that ownership of, of the content that we're teaching, so. Just wanted to share that with you all. And we're, we're trying a lot of different strategies and bouncing ideas, so it's been a really, really positive working space, which I think is what's helping that staff attendance. You know, I want to come to school, I want to see what we're doing in our, our math and our science, so it's been awesome.
And I want to share something, kind of a specific thing that Kara did. Kara and Anna Markevka and I attended a Saturday math workshop at Mount Holyoke College about a month and a half ago. Kara and Anna came back and, and took the ideas and put them into practice in their classroom with number talks, and I got to visit and see how it was working in Kara's classroom. So I asked Kara to share that with our whole faculty at a faculty meeting. So she led all of us as learners in a number talk. And the next week, visiting a classroom on the next, the third floor, I'm seeing number talks in action. So I think that this is just a great example of teacher initiative and, and energy, and trying something, and seeing that it works, and feeling really excited about it, sharing it with colleagues, colleagues saying, "Hey, I want to try that." So that's, that's just, I think, a great example of, of this, this really positive energy. So thank you so much. I'm very privileged to have the wonderful students that I do in our building, and I've invited some of them to come and just share their experience, because that's a really important perspective. So could I have my two sixth graders and my seventh grader come forward? And I wonder if you just want, I, I know that you've got something written, and maybe you want to get started with it, and then others can join in? Does that feel comfortable?
Hi, I'm Jessiah Befried. I'm a student at GMS, and, and GMS, we have many different programs, such as music, robotics, and a question, and more. And these programs have helped us students to showcase our many different talents and skills. It gives, it gives kids the opportunities to participate in these programs that we wouldn't be able to learn outside of school.
We're also doing a program sort of thing where we're using Scratch. It's about math, and like, there's geometry and all sorts of things, which is actually a very fun experience, how to learn math.
My name's Paloma, and I've been a student at GMS for three years, and I think our school has come a long way, like, learning how to be responsible, respectful, and safe around the building. Our school offers a lot of choices, and we get to have fun, and we have like, a lot of fun things for students, and like concerts and stuff like that, and...
During sixth grade advisory, we do something that we call circle time, and we can like share pros and cons, and our weekend plans, and it's just a nice feeling to have someone pay attention to you.
And also, in our advisory, we also go on walks, so when we go outside, we can like cool down and start our morning off with a nice relaxed... So when we go outside, we can like cool down and start our morning off with a nice, relaxed, calm day, and yeah.
For our advisory, we greet each other, and we like play games and stuff. And for lunch, we have assigned seats, but usually it's new sometimes. And it gives us an opportunity to make friends and learn more about them.
Sixth grade also has assigned seats during lunch, but just like Paloma said, it's the same opportunity.
Thank you all for speaking, and I want to maybe, Jessiah, do you want to share about your plan for the after-school club and how that's evolving?
So, I would like to make a club that's called Writer's Act. And after school on Thursdays, we would go to the theater room, and we would like split up into two groups, one for writers and one for actors. So writers are able to write scripts for the actors to perform in front of like maybe different types of grades and like experience the thrill of like creating our own scene scripts and all of those. And we're starting after break in January, and we're developing more details on it.
And for the actors' part of writing act, you get to like act out your peers' writing and ideas that they have.
Sounds like a lot of fun. Thank you so much for coming to talk to us. We don't always get to have student visitors at our meetings, and it is just a delight. And I want you all to know that you are very professional coming in here and telling us about your experience. It's really, really nice. So thank you so much. Are there any other final comments from our student representatives? Okay. Thank you. Member Ekstrom, do you have a question for the students?
I actually have a comment for you ladies. So my son is Sam Ekstrom, and he likes to play Magic. I see a smile, you must know who he is. And he likes to play Magic, and one day, he came home and said to me that he wanted to start a Magic Club after school. So he was adamant and assertive and made that happen, and I don't think that there's any reason that you can't make yours happen as well. I also want to say that he didn't have a permission slip to stay home after school, and so he got to stay home. And he was a hot, angry man, and I said, "Well, you should have had the permission slip," and that was into that. So remember your permission slips for everyone. Go, girls, you got this.
Super. Thank you.
Yes, it was actually the example of the Magic Club that has fostered some other after-school clubs that derive from student voice and the support of our educators. So I'm really excited.
We have some strong personalities at our house, as you might imagine.
Yeah, so, yeah, now that I realize you have the PowerPoint, rather than me going through each page, are there questions that you have that I can answer? Yes.
Member Johnson.
First, I just want to say thank you, and thank you for your leadership and for everyone who's here to present to us today. It's not scientific or data-driven, but all the word of mouth that I've heard since you've taken leadership has been really positive, so I really appreciate it. And the tone of you all coming in here is so great, because sometimes being at a turnaround, you could feel a little bit of stigma, it could be a little depressing or something, but I'm just feeling more of a like really positive attitude and like you're kind of having fun with it, which is great. My question is, how do you, if we haven't increased the staff, how do you do shared teaching together? How does that decrease, increase the faculty-staff-student ratio?
Sure, thank you for asking. And so, we're piloting it this year in our fifth grade, and we have a special educator assigned to each grade level. And when the special educator is able to co-teach, as in the case of the math class, that means that the students are getting that differentiated support in their core math class. It's enriching all students learning in that math class. So it is a choice, and I think that we're seeing some really strong benefits, because in that classroom environment where there's the two educators, and I have to say, having had the honor of visiting the class numerous times, students don't see one teacher as the lead teacher and one teacher as the support teacher, they're both the educators.
Yes. So, one of the things that we've had over the last two years was this kind of pull-out math program, so I had students that would leave my classroom, and it really takes away from that community feeling. So this year with inclusion, all of my kids who would have been pulled out from that class, they get to stay in that classroom, and they experience the math that we're all doing. So they're really on target for that grade level, even if they're not at that grade level yet. And so they get to have that kind of full community experience, whereas you could feel the change with like, "Oh, we're taking these students out," and they knew that they were leaving for, you know, to get differentiated instruction, whereas having that teacher do her like pull-out services in the classroom really invigorates the class, to see it as a community of learners, not just like, "Oh, these are the kids that stay and these are the kids that go." So it really kind of keeps us connected as a classroom. So I found it a very positive experience to have her in the classroom with that.
Member Ekstrom.
And just sort of as a backup to that, there's a lot of data that supports having special needs students, rather than taken out, I don't want to say included or pushed in, but rather than being removed from a classroom for a differentiated teaching style, they, special needs students glean a lot more, and they have a much tighter community. And so that makes a huge difference.
I want to support the comment that was just made, and also add that the research indicates it's positive not just for special education students, but for all students in the classroom. And I think that's what you're hearing from Ms. McColligan, about the community that it creates. So it's really about how resources were deployed, and this was very intentional, and a lot of this was in the planning phase last year. We probably spent, I don't know, upwards of fifty hours just on the schedule last year to be able to plan how to coordinate so that the schedule didn't drive what happened. Instead, that particular goal was part of the driving force for the schedule. It was very intentional, and to be able to pilot it with facilitated support and training this year, all the results that have come out early have been very positive. Thank you for your willingness to try something new.
Could you tell us a little bit about the work that you're doing around social emotional learning? And I'm seeing, I'm not sure what page it is, but about a needs assessment?
Absolutely. So, one of the supports that we receive from the state in our turnaround status is the support of the statewide system of support experts. And one of those is an experienced special educator who's been working with our student support staff, our counseling staff. GMS is attending the state Mental Health Social Emotional Learning Academy, where we've gone for three days of professional development, and we're getting some coaching support from them. And one of the first things to do is to do a needs assessment, is, you know, what resources do you have within your building in terms of human resources, in terms of community outreach connections? So the first thing that we did was a comprehensive needs assessment and resource mapping. And now we're targeting, okay, these are the gaps, these are the systems that we can put in place to bridge those gaps. So every day, the associate principals and I meet twice a day to have a connection. Every Thursday, our counseling staff meet with the grade-level teams of educators during their collaborative time, so that teachers can share questions or concerns about students so that there's good communication, that there's an identification of, oh, something's off, and, oh, we can work together to support that student. Weekly, we meet as a student support team, which is the counseling staff and the administrators to talk about situations that are more chronic perhaps, and we meet with some of our community partners. So once a month, the CSO ICC folks come and meet with us. So I think that what we're trying to do is really bridge some communication gaps that can occur with regular meetings and with systems in place, so that we don't want anybody to fall through the cracks. Social emotional learning is what makes it possible for us to learn anything. If we're not fully accessible to take in new information in math class because we've got too many other things on our mind and in our hearts, that makes it so much more difficult to learn. Greenfield Middle School has an extraordinary team of counselors that work really well together. And it means that we, as the administrators, can connect with the counseling staff to make sure that students get their needs met. Beginning in January, all of our grade levels will begin the second step program, which is a specific bullying prevention and skills curriculum that can be done from kindergarten through seventh grade. But we're going to make sure that all our fifth graders, all our sixth graders, and all of our seventh graders get it. The advisory that you heard the students speak about is core to the schedule this year. Students begin and end the day with their advisory group. It means that there's those check-ins and the circles, like the students shared the beginning of the day. There can be some reflection and organizing at the end of the day before folks head off. So I think that all of these are ways that we're trying to wrap our arms around our students in the sense metaphorically, but just to help people feel connected with each other and so that they're more able to learn their core subjects as well.
Thank you. I think I saw, member Hollins and then Mayor Martin.
Hi, I want to thank you for this great presentation and for the terrific update.
Thank you.
I'm interested in academic, well, I'm interested in everything, and I love your clubs and everything, but the reason I mention it is the state has just come out with new guidelines on financial literacy. And I attended the webinar, whatever, and what really struck me, I was just looking at my notes, a middle school principal spoke as one of the lead speakers and said that they had started doing a program with, in the middle school part of this, about how education pays off. And in addition to all the things they were doing with banking, and they mentioned all the programs, and I can share them with you sometimes, but he said they started teaching students that if you had no high school diploma, this is what you could expect to earn. And if you had a high school diploma, this is what you could expect to earn. And if you had an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree and a master's degree and a professional degree with seven years of college, and they were showing students, this is how your education affects your income, and that the students were really able to put together, wait, if I want a house and a car, and I want to have a home or whatever, and I like to buy new sneakers, that you really, and he, but the reason I mention that is he said the education in his school, the interest in achievement on the students' part went zzzzzup, as soon as students saw the connection between learning and the economics of living. And I think this, the program on financial literacy is really interesting, and maybe if someone's interested in your walking distance, all these banks and all the banks. So I just wanted to mention that because it seemed, this particular new set of standards seemed to have, according to this principal, such a high impact on student motivation to learn. And thanks for coming to Greenfield.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that resource.
Mayor Martin?
Yes, I also echo the accolades for the presentation. That was very nice.
Thank you.
Coupled with the field trip to the museum, outstanding. I have just a couple of observations and questions. So, when you begin the co-teaching in the fifth grade, sixth grade, so you're receiving your students from the elementary schools. Have you coordinated the turnaround plan with the elementary schools?
So I have not done that. I think that there's certainly room for us to share our experience with turnaround, and it has truly been a supportive experience. But I have not so far done a lot of bridging the gap from the elementary to the middle school, but I can see the value of that for sure.
Is there also some coordination with the curriculum bringing in the civics programs in the five, sixth, and seventh grade?
Yes, absolutely.
With the, you call them the, what are they, the four strongholds or the four?
Sure, four turnaround practices? Yes, yes, exactly.
So, I didn't notice any expected outcomes. So, for instance, with the SEL, is there an expectation in decreased discipline or suspensions and bullying? And what is your expectation after a certain period of time?
Yes, so monitoring our progress is an important part of the work that we're doing with the turnaround program. In February, an outside team is going to come visit the school, and they're going to do the same sort of in-depth analysis as outsiders, looking at the school, talking to people, and compare it with what they did last year. So before I came, there was a visit as part of the turnaround process, and so I think that's going to be an important marker of comparing the data from last year, the data from this year. More holistically, we're planning to do some focus groups with our students in February to again compare the results of some focus groups that were done last year in the development of the turnaround plan, to compare how students are experiencing the school this year. There's a lot of data monitoring that's built into this, in the sense that we start every year by having our students do some testing, NWEA map testing, and we'll do it again in January and look at the progress. One of the things that we've done in our focus on building writing skills is, earlier in the year, we had all of our students take a sample MCAS writing prompt, and our educators scored it and looked at it and noted patterns that needed improvement. And so a lot of what we're doing in our writing instruction is based on what we saw as the needs, and we look forward to doing another writing assessment in the spring to just see that growth. So there's a lot of measuring through data that I think will support what you're seeing kind of qualitative, yes, qualitatively, you've heard these anecdotal experiences and the good feelings that we're having. We'll look at the quantitative data that supports some of those changes that we're making as well.
So one last question, and thank you for that answer.
Sure.
A turnaround kind of connotes a U-turn somewhere. And so when do you get back to the, no need to turn around anymore and just move forward?
Oh, that's an interesting visualization of it. I think that we are on our way. We're seeing this as an opportunity to use resources and use our internal resources in new ways. And so I really feel like we're on this trajectory, this kind of like taking flight in positive ways. So I guess I wouldn't, I understand why you'd say it's a turnaround, like a U-turn, but it's more like, we're on our way, we're making good progress, and we're just going to keep on following this roadmap that our staff developed. You know, I love that the turnaround plan that I get to implement isn't something that somebody from the state constructed or that I came up with. It's what our educators came up with through their data analysis last spring. So it's really, it's our faculty driving our progress forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any final comments, questions? All right. And it's my understanding that there's no vote or anything needed. vote or anything needed here. This is just a presentation to tell us about what's going on. Super. Thank you to everyone for coming. Thank you very much, the student ambassadors, again. You're phenomenal. And gosh, I'll have to tune in to see how the field trip goes. Ah, starting to get sad. Ah, I hope there is one. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we are headed back to reports. Guess what? I got nothing for you. I'll move straight to the superintendent. How's that? Oh, actually, I'm joking. So, we have a meeting on Monday, and we generally schedule that starting at five. I'm suggesting a 6:00 PM start time. Does that work for everyone? Nah, I know. So, much for ignoring your phone, right Glenn? Yes, I'm all.
Are we still going to continue tonight's agenda over to Monday?
There are additional items that will be added on Monday for the Monday agenda. Super. Stop. Bill. Okay. Okay, Superintendent, take it away.
So, in your packet, you have a number of materials that relate to the superintendent's report. I won't go all through all of them, except to say that we have some local media coverage from before the Thanksgiving holiday. A number of our schools participated in the turkey trots or the fun runs. The Academy of Early Learning held a fantastic and successful food drive and a mini march. We have published our dates for the film festival, which will be the 10th annual. It's coming up this year in May, again. It'll be May 8th in 2020. And we have a sort of looking forward, looking back theme this year. So, there's going to be some exciting changes to that while we can continue the traditions that have worked well. And there will be an art show with it as well, which we're looking forward to. In other recent news, we announced the superintendent's award to a high-achieving student in Greenfield High School, and Gabe LaRouche was awarded that this year. He is a really terrific student, taking an incredible array of AP classes. And when I surprised him in class to give him the award in front of his classmates, he just happened to be wearing a suit for his AP Euro presentation. So, he, he was quite a deserving student, and congratulations, Gabe. Today, Federal Street School completed their annual delivery of wreaths about town. I'm always happy when mine arrives. They come and sing with us and put up a wreath on the door. But the library, the rec department, a number of area departments and partners also received wreaths today. And that was Federal Street out there making merry. So, thank you to Federal Street School. You received notice that Coach John Hickey was named Coach of the Year from the Massachusetts Basketball Coaches Association earlier this month. And that's in reference to last year's amazing season in which the Greenfield girls were in the cage at the semifinal level for the first time in 29 years. So, congratulations, Coach Hickey. That's the second time he's gotten that award. And you also received notice earlier today that Governor Baker signed a $50,000 grant for the Greenfield Public Schools, a significant portion of which goes to the efforts that you heard about here tonight. And so, we're quite excited that that application has been approved and received for our work. A few upcoming events as we head into this last few weeks before break. At the middle school again, on, on, sorry, December 13th, they'll be handing out the Student Achievement Awards for the first trimester, focusing on that student achievement. And the Greenfield High School has a pep rally. And then, the 20th, Friday, the 20th, is an early release for vacation. There's no preschool that day at AEL, and it is a Community Service Day at the high school. And then, we are off and closed for the December vacation, and school resumes on January 2nd. I did want to note that after the substitute rate changes went into effect, we had a significant increase in the number of substitutes that were applying. I would say approximately 20 new substitutes are now in our system. And among them, folks that are certified teachers, retired teachers, so bringing their skill set to our schools, which is a very positive thing. You have all of the school newsletters and calendars in your packet, and a photo of Gabe in a suit, and the social media. So, if there are any questions, I'll take them. We did move the financials to their own agenda item at a request of the chair. So, those are in your packet, but they will be addressed separately under that agenda item.
So, Superintendent, I actually don't see it on our printed agenda. We could double check the posting if somebody can bring it up, see if it is a separate agenda item.
If you'd like to discuss them now, we can have the business manager.
I do want to discuss them. So, I was just going to point out that I don't see them.
We can certainly do that under the report, which is what we typically do. So,
Okay.
Could I ask our business manager to come forward on the?
Come on forward, Steve. Before we move into financials, though, are there any questions or comments for the superintendent about what she just presented? Super. Thank you for all that info.
Before we do this, at risk of, I just want to point out, at risk, are we going off agenda if we do this when it's not included on our agenda and needed to be posted 48 hours? I'm posing the question.
To have an informational about, oh, goodness. Great. I love when it, I love when it's right in, right there. My eyeballs don't see it. So, it is here. So, Steve, I've prematurely requested your presence at the hot seat. So, we will wait until that agenda number seven. Thank you for pointing that out. Great. Nonetheless, though, I do believe that we are able to receive informational items. Generally, with the open meeting laws, if there's anticipated vote on anything, that it becomes an issue. I see Member Hollins' hand. What's going on over there?
I just think if we're going to have a budget presentation, it shouldn't come in under superintendent report. I think putting it on the new business or old business is best.
Okay, Member Hollins, just for the record, I missed the item on number seven. So, it's actually number seven on our, on our agenda, and I overlooked it. Okay, thank you. So, the next thing is subcommittee referral. Member Ward has been pressing this. This was something that came up in subcommittee, and the committee, I recall, did not want to take it up. We could not find a record of it. So, it's here again for our consideration. Would the committee like to refer to subcommittee, an audit of nursing facilities?
What does it mean?
That's a, that's a good question. I think generally with an audit, there's a review of the facilities that our nurses generally engage with. Mayor Martin?
Thank you. I, in my conversations with Member Ward, he was concerned that, as, as I am, with the number of students being tended to within our school system, that the, the clinical areas where the nurses seeing these students should always maintain some sort of approved, approved area. So, I would suggest and, and would move that the, the referral to the Board of Health and the, and the, and, and another facility manager for the school system, review the nursing areas within the different schools to, to make sure that they're in compliant and acceptable clinical areas.
Is there a second?
Seconded for discussion.
That was seconded by Member Hollins. Member Hollins?
I don't know that I think we should call on the Board of Health, because I think we have all master's degree level nurses. And what they do is under the Board of Health with a great big guideline, book, thick book from the state. But I do think on occasion, since one of our, one of the first responsibilities ever for public school committees governance was to make sure there were adequate facilities. And I think it's good for us sometimes to walk through the buildings. And what's been of my concern hasn't been nursing. I hadn't thought about that. But I've been concerned about whether we have enough space for our students in the schools and whether we have children that are being tutored in closets, which-
So, let's keep it on topic. It is about nursing.
So, I'm supporting the idea of the school committee knowing how space is used, particularly small spaces, whether it's for nursing or tutoring or whatever. And I think we should make sure our facilities are adequate for what they're used for. And that, but I don't think it's only necessary to look at the spaces nurses have. I can say when I started here in 2008, there were nurses in closets with carpet, no windows, and no water. And so, it happens.
What, what year was that?
2008. And that, but I'm just saying, when you get overcrowded, I just think it's a good idea that we know how our space is being used.
I see Member Ekstrom. And also, just for the record, I don't believe that we are overcrowded. Member Ekstrom?
I'm actually just curious what the real drive behind this is. Is this related to HIPAA laws? Is this related to some public indication of underservice? I mean, just by virtue of my kid, I see a whole lot that goes on in the nurse's office in several of the schools. And so, I'm just, I'm curious what's driven the question.
The motion?
And the motion.
Okay. Because they're, they're different.
So,
I see you.
I think my concern is certainly with HIPAA, in that there's protections for Avery's student. That should be, should be protected. There's also, I think we all can agree that school season is also flu season, and there's also other, you know, number of bring-home germs that many families suffer through, including mine. But there's also the opportunity for cross-contamination. Every nurse has their own private license, and they're, they're responsible for that license. If they're, if they are by their employment forced to work in an area that can't meet the confines of the privacy laws and the environmental laws that are rather environmental conditions that they would be involved in, then it should be, it should be reviewed. I don't see any problem with, with having the nurses come before the school committee to, to say, yes, I'm fine, everything's good, and I'm, I'm maintaining all my protections as an RN. Secondly, I would remind the school committee that nurses are our responsibility.
So, I saw the superintendent's hand, and then I see Member Karen. And then, I just want to remind the committee that actually this was going to be a very short business item to refer to subcommittee if we wanted to have further conversation about it. And right now, we do have a motion on the floor to, rather than investigate, the motion was to invite the Board of Health to review. Was there another component to that that I missed? Susan Farber?
And another facility manager.
Thank you. So, Superintendent, do you want to comment? And then, Member Karen, Member Karen first?
I think that we need to back up a step and send this to subcommittee, and have the subcommittee have the nurses come and report to them. And then, we can report back. And if you guys still feel like there's a bunch of unanswered questions, then we can take the step to go to the Board of Health or the facility managers, if that's where we need to go. But I don't think we're at that level. This was more of just a general consent question, the way I understood it. Let's make sure they have everything they need. I don't think we need the Board of Health to do that. I think the nurses can come report to us. We hold that we, we know who has licenses. We keep on track of that. That's our job, the superintendent's job. So.
Thanks, Member Karen. Would you like to comment?
Sure. I support our nurses having the equipment, the facilities, and the supplies that they need. If there's interest in the committee providing an updated report, I'm happy to either investigate this and bring it back to subcommittee, or have nurses come and speak to subcommittee. It would just be helpful if there was a clear agenda item, so we can gather the information and bring you back a report. We don't have anybody in closets with carpets.
Okay. So, there is a motion on the table. Are we clear on what the motion is? That was put forward by Mayor Martin to invite the Board of Health to review along with another facilities manager. Okay. All those in favor?
Of the motion or of the question?
Of the motion.
If the second agrees, I'll withdraw that motion and refer to committee for-
Health and safety and facilities.
Investigation, or rather, not investigation, that's just wrong. Just have a review of the nursing facilities in the school system.
Is there a second? Second by Member Hollins. Okay. And all those in favor? Sure. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next item. School committee member attendance and stipends. So, in your packet, there's just a one sheet on information about the town charter. Basically, I need to report to our payroll staff on school committee attendance as it corresponds to any changes to, or as it corresponds to any changes to our stipends. So, I requested that Secretary Ekstrom put together an attendance sheet. So, that is also before you. Please do be aware that executive session is listed as a separate meeting, and that is, is not how we generally think of executive session. The question here is, about halfway through the year, we decided to add on second, yeah, what's up?
Can I speak to why I included that?
Just one second. So, about halfway through the year, we, we decided to include a second meeting per month. And that second meeting technically is a special meeting. However, it has been treated as a regular thing. So, I am asking if we want to, to consider our special meetings as a, a regular meeting, or whether we should just be looking at the second Wednesday of the month attendance as it corresponds to stipends. Does that make sense? I see Member Johnson.
At the orientation I went to for school committee members, this kind of question came up, and they, the folks at Mass kind of cautioned about, about prorating stipends and, and the kind of different legal issues it can run into. So, I'm just wondering if maybe we want to discuss, have you discuss with council rather than have us weigh in, because I don't, I'm not sure I really have the expertise to decide what quote-unquote counts towards-
As a special meeting.
Attendance. I think that's more of a, that may be more of a, a legal question.
Okay. I see Member Hollins.
Yeah. If, if there's something in the city charter about, is there something in the city charter specific to school committee attendance? Because this is any board member. So, there, does that, well, if, okay.
We're the only board member that receives stipends other than the council.
So, it says three regular meetings. And I went, I did a five-year review of how many meetings we have. We have some months that we have three meetings called special meetings. And then, there are meetings that are called regular meetings. So, we have 10, 11, or 12 regular meetings every year so far for the last five years. And then, depending on the year, seven to 14 special meetings. So, I think if we're going to vote, and in our policy, I think, if we're going to vote that we meet two regular meetings a month, that's one thing. But I think we have to not, after the fact, take meetings that are called special meetings and call them regular meetings. So, we need to decide that. But on the issue of attendance, we do have remote participation. So, unless you're really incapacitated, even if you're away anywhere, what, what I have trouble with and what I think we have to consider are meetings that we don't set up here. And then, three days, you know, within 48 hours, there's a, a meeting called that no one has in his or her schedule. And that's really hard.
So, let's, um, let's keep it to the agenda item. So, what I'm hearing is two members now essentially saying, let's just count our regular meetings as regular meetings and the, the second meetings of the month that have been pseudo-regular as special meetings and leave it at that.
But what I was getting at is I think we need to, this is also a policy issue. If we, well, if we wanted to- If we, well, if we wanted to have more than one regular meeting a month, it's kind of a policy on, section B policy.
Yes, I heard that, and then additional comments about other meetings. So, just to have a record, we'll just say that for the 2019 year, we will count our second Wednesday of the month meeting as a regular meeting as it corresponds to the stipends. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Hollins. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion.
As we know, we have no subcommittee for budget and finance, and so, and previously, we had declared that our special meetings, which would be on Mondays, would be dedicated to the budget and finance. So, if, if you only show up for the regular meeting, and that's the one that counts for the stipend, actually, the, the budget and finance Monday second meeting is very important. So, I don't think that really tends to, I don't think the motion really goes to what we're talking about, which is declaring a second meeting. We're not talking stipends, according to number three, school committee attendance and stipends. It says review attendance in charter language. So, the charter language for the stipend is by ordinance.
So, actually, no. I just want to say, I just want to correct you. I pulled that off of the chair's timed agenda, where I have a section that is the notes section. So, the far right section is just notes, like, these are things that, you know, we may use as materials to support this conversation. And then, there's a little blurb underneath that says that, you know, this is about the stipend payments. And that's why I brought it forward, because I'm reporting to our payroll tomorrow by, tomorrow is the deadline, I believe, for us to get paid by December twenty-seventh. So, part of why I'm bringing this forward is just to make sure everybody's on the same page, I can provide the information, and we are good to go.
Is there, is there consensus for having two meetings a month, or two regular meetings a month?
Are you saying moving forward?
Moving forward.
I think that that's something that the new committee should probably take up.
Good point.
Thank you. I see, I'll go with, Member Ekstrom first, then Member Hollins. We do have a motion on the table. Go ahead.
I just actually want to talk about methodology of how I got these numbers. I went through all of the approved minutes, or, let me restate that, or the pending minutes, since we approved some of them this evening, and took the numbers from there. There has been more than one occasion that people have not attended executive session, not because they have recused themselves, but they have chosen to not attend, which is why I haven't included that here. I just thought that was an important note.
Okay.
Because in my little world, that makes me, I think you're shirking your responsibility. But that's just me. We all can say we don't agree, and that's fine. I just presented the information. That's all.
And Member Hollins?
Just a closing comment. I agree with the mayor. We, we either have to have budget subcommittee, or we have to meet and have the meeting we said we would have on budget. The issue why we can't use it this time is we have warned those meetings as special meetings. That's the complication.
Thank you. I, I just agree, I mean, I agree. I feel like, you know, with a little kind of foresight, I think that this issue should have come forward earlier, because I do think it, you know, it matters when we come to our meetings. But given the situation, I support this. Are there any other comments or anything? We've got a motion on the table to count only the second Wednesday meetings as the regular meetings as it corresponds to stipends.
For, the calendar year 2019?
Of 2019. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You were an aye? Unanimous. Thank you. So, that information will go forward, and you can expect a check on the twenty-seventh? Is that when it comes out? Sometime around at the end of the year. Okay. So, we have a Green River School updated proposal review and council update. Do you just want to give us a quick brief on that, Superintendent?
I spoke with the chair previously and suggested that if allowable, I'd love to discuss this further on Monday, because we do have a meeting three business days from now, and tonight is a heavy agenda. In the past, we've talked at length about the Green River School. This committee has voted a proposal. We've been working to update that proposal. Been working with our Director of People's Services on some particular student needs that could be best served in that building, as well as working with some additional partnerships to strengthen that proposal. And I'd like to bring that before you on Monday.
Member Ekstrom, and then Mayor Martin.
Motion table this point until our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Motion.
Motion to table the Green River School Plan Review.
I'm going to clarify.
I'll allow it. What's up?
Could we have access to the previously submitted plan, the date and minutes, so that we could review that again?
Oh, yeah, sure. We can, we can get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you very much. So, we'll, we'll look forward to that on Monday. Great. So, we are now on policy section B. This is completing the first reading of section B, starting at BEC, I believe is the first one. Thank you very much. I actually want to just start us off with a motion to accept the rest of policy section Bs, starting with BEC, and ending with BK, to accept this as a first reading as presented. Seconded by Member Johnson. Is there a discussion on this? Member Hollins?
Since BE is school committee meetings, why don't you just start with BE? The next one is BEC.
My, in the review of the last meeting, BEC was the first policy that we would be addressing today. Is that accurate, Member Karen?
BEC is first reading.
Right, but-
At the first.
But the one right before that, that we talked about is the one where you talk about what's a regular meeting and what's a special meeting. It's our opportunity to just talk about it.
Okay.
But it would be a second reading.
That would be a second reading.
Oh.
So, the policy subcommittee has reviewed this. I believe that, if Member Karen, if you want to comment on any highlights in the B section, we've all had the B section for a very long time.
I think we-
And I also-
No. Like, I think we handed out this the first time in July, and it got tabled, but you've had access to this revised thing for that long, so.
And also, just want to remind that it's a first reading.
It's a first reading.
Mayor Martin?
So, certainly, we've had this since July, maybe sooner, but we've never had a good conversation as a whole committee. And am I to understand the first reading is just a first reading, and we discuss this at the second reading? Is that correct?
We've, sort of, in the past, we've done it both ways, that at the first reading, you brought up questions. We brought it back to the policy, so that for the second reading, I had, if I didn't have a clear answer, I had a clearer answer by the second reading. So, if there are specific questions right now, that I am open to it, I just, if we don't start making a more streamlined process for this, and I don't want to shortchange anybody's time of reading and learning and asking questions, that's not what I'm saying, this is going to take forever. Like, we're at the point in policy, we're so far ahead of any first and second readings, that we might need to just stop with meeting with Liz until we can get anywhere near pushing it, moving forward. So, I absolutely do not want to stop people from asking questions or speaking, but we need to come up with a faster and clearer process for it, rather than me reading it every time. So, part of me was ready to be like, you know what? Let's have the policy subcommittee come up with a clearer plan, bring it forward, and everybody agree to it, and just not even have this conversation right now. But I'm okay with having it, if that's what we want to do.
Would, would Chair Nunes consider any questions, go through, go to the, by email to all the committee members, and then refer to the chair of the policy committee, so that we could consider the corrections and the emails by the subcommittee, and then present for another agenda item, the second reading?
So, I think best practice would be to not send out your questions or comments related to policy to the full committee. However, I think that sending directly to the policy subcommittee chairperson is an appropriate place for your comments to land, without CCing everybody on it. I think that's just the safest, easiest way to do it, because then we kind of open up some potential for open meeting law issues. It's easy to slip into deliberation accidentally. I see Member Hollins?
Well, we govern by policy, and I really care about our policies. If we're going to, one reason you do policy review is to educate the district and the members what the policies are. So, if you're never going, if we're never going to read them, and we're not going to say, this policy means this, and we're going to change it from this to that, then what are we even doing anyway? Let's just adopt the state's policy. I think it's really important that it's on our agenda. I think it's really important we have an active policy committee. I think it's important that we publicly say, this is our policy, and what the change is, because that's how you educate it. I want to say one other thing. The last policy subcommittee had five meetings on a process, and it had a first reading, and it never was finalized. It was how we bring them up, how we share them with people that are influenced, get feedback. It just streamlined. And if, if it ever had a second reading, we'd have a process, so I think that should come up in policy. But I made comments on the policies that are changing, and I think we've had a, five meetings where we've canceled it at eight o'clock, I think it's been, go over what the changes are, and let people make their comments, so we all know. These are our governing policies.
So, I just want to say for the record that the, it, the floor is open for comments on the policy that is here. There's a motion to accept these as a first reading. So, if you have specific things that you want to touch on, please do touch on them, and we are using a lot of time to be talking about these process things. I, I would like to just put pause over here. I see Member Johnson, and then we'll come back to you, Member Hollins, if you want to prepare your comments, and we can go from there. No, because the motion is open for deliberation, and included in that deliberation could be comments about the policies that are before us.
I'll speak. So, first of all, I have to say, I couldn't disagree more with the concept that the purpose of doing these readings is to educate ourselves and the public about what these policies are. This is not an effective way to, to train or do public sharing of information. This is actually the opportunity for the school committee to give feedback to the policy committee on the changes that they have proposed, and to bring that back. It's an editing process. It's not a going through and discussing every policy process. And, and as Member Karen mentioned, if we do it that way, we will not get through them. And so, we have an obligation, I think, to, to do this work product, create revised policies, and have them for the school's implementation for the good of our students. And I, I just want to echo the, what the chair said, which is that the purpose of having the, the motion to accept these, and then having a discussion, is an opportunity for school committee members to share their feedback that we could bring back. It's not to stifle discussion, it's just to say, if you have items that you want revisions or want us to take a second look, this is the opportunity to let us know what those are.
So, are you looking for comment on the policy?
Yes. Starting with BEC. Go ahead.
Policy BEDB, called Agenda Format. When we've gone through the B policies, we've taken out what the last policy committee and school committee voted when it didn't comply with what the MASC sample policy. But on this, we've added in what isn't on the school, on the state's sample policy. The subcommittee agenda will be based on items referred by the full committee. The subcommittee agenda will be developed in coordination with the superintendent. So, you've basically stripped your standing committees of, of the chairperson deciding what details they want to cover for standing committee. So, if it's, so I, I would say this is not in the sample MASC policy, and it should not be added to this policy.
I, so the, I see Superintendent, but I-
You're just asking, you're just asking for comment, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't have to agree, it's just comments for the budget subcommittee.
Sure. Am I not allowed to provide input, too? There was lengthy conversation about this, and the, the reason why this got added in was actually to establish trust. So, what surfaced at the, at the table, not only at our full committee table, but also at the subcommittee table, was the idea that, you know, folks were not clear about what was going to subcommittee, and there was this opportunity to actually be, to pull back a little bit and be pretty formal about what it was that we were sending to subcommittee. So, everything was just really open at the full committee table. So, that is what is at the origin of including this item here. So, that's just my response to that. And you're correct, it is just an input time. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on policy BEDB at this time? Yes, Superintendent, and then Member Ekstrom.
I just want to note that there was a lot of discussion about this. Part of this has to do with the coordination of the district's resources. So, you have a real conundrum if a number of different subcommittees operating independently are each coming up with their own goals and priorities, and the various members of those committees are engaged in sometimes very significant work, along with the staff required to fulfill those requests. But the full committee never is aware of the full workload. So, that could tie up the resources of the district, or really hamstring efforts towards other goals, and actually conflict with the school committee's stated or voted objectives. So, one of the things that became clear is that a coordinated workflow, so the school committee is aware of what the branches of the school committee are doing, becomes more effective to the school committee's goals. And then, I also just want to note that on multiple occasions, we've heard complaints or concerns about the Mass Association of School Committee template being adopted whole hog. And here you have an example of where the Greenfield Policy Subcommittee very clearly made a, a clear statement about something Greenfield wanted that wasn't in the model policy, and now I hear it being used as the argument against it. I, I think it shows that Greenfield is making the decisions that are best for Greenfield. And again, it is a first reading, there's plenty of time, but I think that's a good thing.
Member Ekstrom?
Actually, I just want to do clarification. The second paragraph, any school committee member, staff member, or citizen may suggest items of business. And then, it later says, a staff member who wishes to have a topic scheduled on the agenda should submit the request through superintendent. Is an item of business different than a topic to be scheduled on the agenda?
So, it's just a, a language concern. We use the word item and then topic. So, you're saying that, are those the same thing?
Yes.
Yes.
I can see that that might be a-
And I see Mayor Martin?
Yes. Just to follow up with Member Ekstrom's question, it seems like any school committee member, staff member, or citizen may suggest items of business. I think I read somewhere where the, the chair of the school committee sets the agenda. Certainly, professionally, there'll be coordination with the superintendent, but the entire district is responsible to the school committee. So, whatever resources are available should be set aside to certainly satisfy the governing elected body for the school district system. So, for a group that meets once a month, I don't think it taxes the system for resources. So, for a group that meets once a month, I don't think it taxes the system for resources. I would, I would, I would continue to see that this addition, the Subcommittee Agenda will be based on items referred by the full committee and the Subcommittee Agenda will be developed in coordination with the superintendent, is kinda like an oxymoron. So the Chair of the School Committee appoints the subcommittees and now you're saying that the subcommittees would coordinate with the superintendent. I don't quite follow that.
Member Karen, then, Member Hollins?
I am hearing your confusion about the language and so perhaps it's something we need to think about. The reason that the Subcommittee would coordinate with the superintendent was so that the people needed to adjust, would be at the meeting. So I don't just, as the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, call a meeting 48 hours in advance and only give the superintendent 48 hours to get everything in order that she needs. That's why I would be coordinating my agenda with her, not so that I can ask her permission to put things on there, so we can think about it. Different language, if that will help on that. And it is absolutely a drain on our resources if I just come up with all of the things I'm interested in in the health facilities. Well, I wanna know how the seven faucets in the boys' bathroom at that school, that starts to become a drain on our resources if I'm just coming up with things I'm interested in. And that's why we decided to do it through the full committee. But also, in speaking with Liz, it is actually a general practice in almost every other school committee that subcommittees only debate on topics that their full committee has asked them to. Otherwise, we could come up with all kinds of things for hours on end. I could spend five hours a week talking about our facilities, but that is a drain on our facilities manager, on our superintendent, on our town DPW. It could be a drain on a million people. And so it was actually a lesson I learned because I didn't understand that at first and I did try to make agendas up to what I thought was important. And it did put drain on different parts of our town. And so it was a lesson I learned and needed to be learned and this would've helped me understand it, just that single line. Oh, if I'm interested in something, I can bring it to my Chair and she'll put it on my-
As we did tonight.
Right.
And Member Hollins?
We're mixing up policies. We already've had a first reading on policy BDE, which is Subcommittee's of the School Committee. And added into that policy, number five, is Subcommittee's have the authority to deliberate on items as referred by the school committee. You might wanna add, and also addition, well, as referred by the school committee, period. That's in your policy. When a Subcommittee's established, they deal with items. This policy is just the format of the agenda. We don't have to say, you can only talk about things that have been assigned, that's in another-
You don't have to say it.
But this is just, this is just formatting your agenda.
Okay, point, point heard. Any other comments on BEDB? Okay. Yes, Member Hollins?
The next one I had a comment was the format of the agenda, which is an exhibit. I think, call to order, approval of minutes, public comment, reports, business. I think we get confused on what's new business and old business. But also, not on our, and not regularly on our meetings is there an opportunity for agenda requests. And we, our Subcommittee's have three people. The issue that's come up with public meeting law is if I write to the Chair of a three-person committee, I'm a committee member, and say, "Could we put this on?" It's a violation because that's going to, that's two members of a three-member committee, a majority. So there has to be some way on agendas, including our school committee agendas, to have topics, topics that have come up for the next agenda and that would address the superintendent's issue. Agenda requests, as a format, this is a format exhibit. Every meeting uses the same format. That's my comment. It doesn't particularly need a response, but-
I see the Superintendent's hand-
Just a clarifying question. I'm trying to follow what just was said. So in a Subcommittee, there are typically three members and if one person talks to another member, that's two out of three, that's a quorum of the Subcommittee. But this is an agenda format for full committee meetings. And so if a Chair of a Subcommittee speaks to the Chair of the full committee and requests an agenda item, that's two out of seven, which is not a quorum. So I'm not sure what the issue with this is.
I'm sorry, the title didn't say, "School Committee Agenda Format." So I had thought this was Subcommittee.
Thank you.
So then my comment is just that we need to have some way to get agenda requests on our formatted agenda.
My understanding is that you can still request an agenda anytime by emailing the Chair and requesting an agenda item for the full committee because it's neither an open meeting law violation and that often does happen in public session. But our own policy does say it's up to the Chair to select those items.
But that way, no member here ever knows, I never know what anyone else-
That's right.
-adjusted and then we never can say, "Oh yeah, we're all interested in nurse rooms" or whatever it is.
Did I see your hand, Katie? Or did I make that up? Okay. I see Mayor Martin over there. What do you say?
I guess, what's the explanation for deletion of some of the items from the original agenda format to this very brief format? So we've taken out financial report, payment of bills and financial report. We've taken out unfinished business, new business?
We actually, we actually haven't taken anything out. As you can see, there's no strikes. So, we actually, when we were having this meeting, we were unsure how in-depth we should go. Just because it doesn't say payment of bills, doesn't mean that that's not included in business, right? It's gonna be included in business. Business, it can be anything that the school committee has decided is important to talk about. So, it can also be in reports. Payment of bills can go in reports. So this is just a very streamlined, clear order. So people who don't know how our meetings typically run can go to our policy and say, "Oh, if I wanna speak, I have to wait through about 15 minutes of stuff." It wasn't, but if we would like to have a more in-depth example, we absolutely can. There wasn't a reason to delete it. The way I understood our conversation, and I will defer to my other committee members if they remember differently than I, is the reason we didn't strike it was because either was fine. One was just more in-depth, but they actually, the less in-depth one covered exactly everything on here, just less words.
Right. I'm just saying that the brief format is very vague. Doesn't offer, doesn't invite new comments.
Just one second, I just wanna clarify. So this is, this is the current policy, the one that says Source, Greenfield at the bottom or towards the, on the one-third. And then the other one is actually Model MASCE Exhibit. So the one, we didn't delete things off of, the one that you're referring to that says payment of bills, financial report, delegations, visitors. That has never been our policy since I've been on the school board.
The long one is MASCE's. The short one is Greenfield's.
It says, "Current School Committee Format, Starting in July 2011." And it's listed there what we currently use. And then MASCE has 12 items where the one that's in use now has eight. And they're both there for your review in this first reading.
And I see Member Ekstrom and then I see Member Hollins. So, Member Ekstrom?
Just as a matter of opinion, I prefer the shorter format, but regardless, we need to include roll call of committee members as an agenda topic because that is what determines if we have a quorum or not. And so I think it's worthy of having call to order and then roll call of committee members directly under that.
Thank you. Member Hollins?
I'm gonna make a quick comment that I think we should go with, the one that has 12 items. The reason is, if we, it's easy to pass something and it's very hard to add anything if it's not on the agenda. But also, if we're not gonna have a finance Subcommittee, then people that have questions after signing the warrants or something, there should be a spot here. So I go for the long one and if we don't have anything, then it's easy to pass it.
I wanna remind the committee and the public that we decided to dissolve the Budget and Finance Subcommittee for the calendar year. So that is ending in a couple of weeks and there will be a new committee. So the new committee may want to change things. They may wanna keep two meetings or they may want to have Subcommittee. I see Member Johnson.
You covered it, thanks.
Okay. I think that we have heard a lot about this, so that will be taken into consideration. Are there comments on other policies? Member Hollins? Pardon?
BEE, Special Procedures for Conducting Hearings. I have just a question. If we have a, does this cover the option of hiring someone as a, as we might want to do, to be an impartial hearing officer?
What, can you, can you say more about what your-
I'm on BEE. I was just, it's just a question. Procedures for Conducting Hearings, does this include? Well, yeah, it could be a disciplinary hearing that somebody wants in public. Does this include a statement that the school committee may? Should the policy include that the school committee may, at its discretion, hire an impartial hearing officer? It's just a question.
Okay.
Are you speaking of a personnel hearing?
Well, it doesn't distinguish. It's just a policy that's called hearings. So I just had a question about it. Special Procedures for Conducting Hearings.
But it starts by saying conducting public hearings, so it is referring to public hearings as opposed to a personnel hearing that somebody might have grounds to request before the committee, which would fall under executive session or other contractual provisions. So it is specific to public hearings.
I don't wanna spend more time on it, but an individual could request a public hearing on a disciplinary matter.
I think that your question is noted and the Policy Subcommittee can take that up or, yep. Are there any other comments on this particular BEE? Okay. Any other comments? Any other policies?
Would you explain the changes on policy revision and review? Why were, your reason for making deletions? It's BGC.
BGC.
You're deleting the date of review, drafting, and action will be recorded on each policy. Employees, you're deleting, employees will be advised that Policy Subcommittee Meeting notices are posted and where they're posted. And, and all of that about notifying people of meetings is eliminated and it just says the date of the policy adoption. And in addition, we don't only adopt, we rescind and we revise and we reaffirm. But you probably say the date of the final policy action is recorded.
Member Karen?
So, the line removed about the Policy Subcommittee Meetings was because that's true for all of our Subcommittee Meetings. So it's listed in how we post for other Subcommittee Meetings. We have to post all of our notices. That's true for every meeting the school committee has, so it didn't need to be repeated here. Can't hurt to repeat it here, it just was getting, we're trying to make things less wordy. The date of review, drafting, action on regular policy was becoming very overwhelming to our staff and it wasn't up to date. This, these notes, and that was, became clear when Don was still on this policy because he had a much better representation of he had gone back and checked through all the minutes and these numbers weren't right. But what we did see, and you'll see the note, there will be a spreadsheet kept noting our reviews. So, this says, so it'll still tell us the last time we reviewed. It's just not gonna say on each individual policy. There will be one centralized location that will list all of that for us. Otherwise, it just, these just numbers might be updated on this one, but they weren't correct on all of them and going through and fixing every single one was becoming taxing.
But there will be someplace, some record-
Yes.
-for each policy?
Yes.
Someplace.
Any other comments on BGC? Okay, moving on. Any additional comments? Sure, Susan?
BHC, School Committee Staff Communications. Is this policy being recommended without any change? It comes up from time to time, whether we're allowed to visit schools without asking permission or are we allowed to have informal conversations like?
This language was exactly the same as MASCE, so there was no revision needed to be made, according to their policy, and we didn't feel like there was either.
This is our current policy and in addition, it's the recommended-
Yeah, that, if you look down at the bottom, it says Source. That's why it says both names. It is also filed in Personnel, or, yeah, Personnel Section.
Someday when we have nothing else to do, this would be a good policy to talk about because at least in my limited communication with staff, people say, "I wish there was more communication with the school committee." And I feel like we're not allowed to talk to the staff. I mean, the line of what's informal communication, formal communication seems fuzzy. So sometime that would be interesting to review.
Do you have any other, anybody else have a question on that policy?
Any comments on any other E-section policies? Susan?
BIA, the School Committee Member Orientation. Are we not going to have a, well, we have some people that are brand new. I don't know if this is what people think is what a new member's orientation should have. But is there a reason that they, anything about our meetings, the annual calendar of tasks, shouldn't be provided to new members?
The committee may not have one.
We put it in there, we're required to have it, but most new members are starting in January. We haven't made an annual calendar yet, so.
Well, I would suggest leaving it and putting comma when available because we really should have some guide that people know in April or in November, you need to be thinking about capital and in December, you need to be thinking about budget. And if you don't, you come on, you're just floating. There are things that we have to do on our schedules.
Any additional comments on BIA? Yes, Superintendent?
I just wanna note that, I believe, beginning last year, the year before? I'm not sure, but we created a webpage for new members that contains much of this information. It's publicly available. It's been much more streamlined. When members were elected, the Chair reached out to them and said to them, "Here's a page where you can access the information." So that's been distributed to new members. We'll continue to update it. At the same time, I do believe it's quite useful and informative. It's also accessible to the public, which I think is useful if anyone was interested in seeing what materials are required of an incoming school committee member. There's quite a lot to be familiar with and as people spend time in the committee and become familiar with all of these different guides and resources and obligations, I think it's nice to have one place that they can go back to. So thank you.
Okay.
I just wanna make one other general comment that, it's about using pronouns. I noticed on a couple of these, we're getting rid of his/her and putting in there. But going through some of the earlier policies, if we talk about a human as in singular, we always have to get into his/her. have to get into his/her, using their for his/her or something. So if in the second revision, there's a chance just to see where you could use plural, then we can avoid that altogether. But I notice some policies have... You've made special mention of that.
It does say on the very top, because we did talk about this a lot of the first one, that anytime it says his or her, it'll all be changed to theirs, they, them. We will no longer be using his or her pronouns. It will always say they, their, and it did just get accepted as like a singular pronoun, so...
But we could just... Instead of saying a staff member, we could just say staff members. We could correct it that way, too, just...
Yes.
Any additional comments on B-section policy? Okay. So I did make a motion to start off this deliberation, just to accept these as a first reading. It's pretty formal to do that, but I think we should go ahead and vote on it and just say that we completed Policy Section B, first reading. So the new committee will look forward to a Policy Section B second reading at some point in the future. Are we ready to just vote as a formality?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Yes, Member Exum?
I think I motioned to have a 10-minute break before we head into some fairly heavy conversation, or five-minute break. I need to go to the bathroom.
Okay, let's say five. Everyone okay with a five-minute recess? All right. Yes. So we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll come right back at 8:35. See you in a minute. Good, good, guys. Okay. Hi, everybody. We are back. We are back from our recess. Thank you for waiting. We are moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven. This is the FY '20 Year-to-Date Budget Update. Steve has come back to the table. Thank you. Steve, I will yield to you and the Superintendent to walk through what you have here for us, and then we'll field any questions, and yeah, go right ahead. Steve, before we move too deep in, I'm actually not seeing the FY '19 Year-to-Date column. Am I overlooking it? I might be. And that would be, as you were referring to last year's numbers, is that in my pocket?
In my pocket, that was just a reference.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I did just wanted to jump in here, if I got to make sure that I was reading the document correctly. So is there more that you have worked out here, as I interrupted?
No, no. Other than that, you see a very large difference in total, or the core revenue. Money that's been in the context this year. And as well, companies are evolving, and a lot of areas to offset. One of the things that makes this a little more difficult is almost not considering that money coming from outside. So that would be revolving funds, so we have more than that. So when you look at this statement, you're looking at eighty percent of the money.
Okay. Superintendent, did you want to add anything before I move to a completely another question? All right, I saw Member Hollins first, and then Mayor Muddin. Then the lines.
On Page Seven, under Special Education.
Okay, thank you.
I think the most difficult line I've been on our whole budget is the one for out-of-district tuition. It's the one where we always struggle because you get many children, and it's always confused because of so much reimbursement, or what's the cost for it, or is this the basic expense? But personally, I'd suggest, you know, we've got $1,003,000 on the comped there, and if you're saying you're worried, that would be one of the first things I would try to state now, personally. And it looks like... Anyway, that's the first comment I just mentioned for the committee. That is, in my opinion, the most difficult line I've ever cleared. And relatedly, on the top page, this is different than the report you used last month. I think on the revolving funds, it was just the report on revolving funds, and it had the beats on the top and expected revenue for the year.
That was the supplemental that you had asked for, for looking at the revenue.
Yeah, that was really helpful, because for me, to think through what we're doing with the revolving funds, we have to know what's the anticipated amount to receive in a year at hand, because we're working with the money from the last year. So whatever report you gave is less than is fewer. But in any event, on what we have here, you're saying our revenue in this special ed tuition account, this is where we invite in students from other districts to fill seats in our classes, special ed programs. And it said last FY '19, our revenue for special ed tuitions was $162,000. This year, do we... We have a lot of specialty programs in other districts shrinking enrollment, and maybe harder for them to have them. Do we expect any more than $162,000 this year for other students sharing our special ed program?
That would be a question for some... However, right now, you look to be on track to get to $162,000. I don't know who would be more likely to...
And the other comment I would make is, under the new money, what's been increased billing, whatever this is for education, we're slated to get more revenue issued? Or is it much?
I think it's much.
That comes into the city?
Well, it would be part of Chapter Seventy.
Part of Chapter Seventy that goes into the cities, so... Well, with the planning ahead, I think we need to have really good communication with the city going through with our... But the other incumbences would be salary, and transportation, but we're taking a lot of transportation costs and moving them out because we've purchased certain things. So all those contacts, they were encumbered for the year. The child, the ABC, the $45,000 is now...
Yeah, there's a few children that still are there, the big incumbents that figure in.
So are you saying that they'll have an update by the next week in December?
No, without leaving, it should have the next week.
But none of the checking of incumbences and personal special ed tuition or anything that are not seen in December?
Not for the...
May I ask you? Are you suspecting that these are just adjustments in budget, or do you suspect that we're spending a lot more than...
No, no.
What's your...
They're adjustments.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Muddin?
Good evening, Stephen. I hope you're feeling better. I want to go back to your cover letter. You state, "At this point, last year approximately, $11.2 million remain to be encumbered." You estimate that at least two payrolls have not been released from the incumbents. So that would indicate there's more than... Those two payrolls have not been released before they're still shown in the incumbents. So then we would look at, you state that the issue is resolved when the available balance will significantly increase. So just using the numbers you presented tonight, it looks like that difference is $1.4 million. So $1.4 million would be added, because it's not encumbered anymore. It would be added to the bottom line of the current, we could say, of the balance of $551,206. But it's looking to be lower.
I wouldn't say lower.
So we have $1.9... We would have $1.9 million plus added to the bottom line after all the incumbences are already present in the budget after September. For the last three years, at this point, we had deficit, so I think we're in great shape. We could verify...
That's not accurate.
I have the floor.
I'm clarifying your point.
So do you have the evidence that for the last three years, at this point in time, it's different than I would just say?
My understanding is that for the last three years, we did not have a deficit at this point. We can...
That's fine. I defer to the actual number for that. So I want to also point out that the budget we've got in this budget presentation is That's the one appropriated by the City Council. The State Committee added $400,000 to that, took over a month and a half, two months ago, so that in fact, that $1.9 million now becomes $2.3 million plus, because we have $400,000 we haven't added to the budget.
As I said before, this is going to be in the budget, whether it's...
The State Committee approved budget is $19.7. Then you show $19.3. So there's $400,000 either goes into the budget as an add-on, or it's going to take as an offset and pay some off-budget expenses.
If you look at the very last page, the original corporation of $19,300,000, there has been a transfer and adjustment of $26,000 for a revised budget of $19,327,733. So what happened with the $400,000, we took together the $19,300,000 budget, which quickly is a toll there. However, this is the generally appropriated budget of $19,300,000, that $300,000 is already included, the expenses of the newer incumbent system.
So would you consider it off-budget?
No, no. This is exactly what the appropriated budget of the city.
So the $400,000 that the State Committee approved is added to, I think the motion was specific, added to the city approved budget, which brings us to $19,700.
No, I can't... That was a fee to expend for the overall budget, the rest of the budget. I cannot change the way to...
So the actual operating budget for the State Committee is $23,000? The additional revenue, I think from Member Collins, some columns were addressing additional revenue coming in. We have documentation on knowing that we have additional revenue this year for the school department. That would be in the form of the quarterly payments, circuit breaker. There's no increase in circuit breaker yet unless the supplemental budget is approved by the House and Senate. I don't think that's happened yet.
No, it hasn't.
The additional revenue added to the balances, it looks like it's going to be about $1.7 million. So that would be the major revolving fund balances for four accounts. That's information that was sent out to all the city councilors, and I believe you, and certainly the Superintendent. So that additional money, that you've got money going both ways. You've got money coming in in the next six months and two quarters, including the two quarters in the six months, and you have the money earmarked from the current balances. Is there a difference between the money going out from today and the money coming in in the next six months? Is there any differential?
The only... I'm unfamiliar with this $1.2 million additional coming in. If you could elaborate on that, because that would be wonderful if that's the truth.
The Superintendent also has a response to some clarification related to this.
Just Mayor, on your previous point, I think it would be helpful to go back to earlier this evening, we approved minutes from the September 9, 2019, meeting, and Member Hollins asked about the phrasing regarding the $400,000 and the revised budgets as... and the revised budgets as, sorry, the revised minutes as we pass them tonight say, the FY twenty budget reflects the council's reduced budget of nineteen point three million, and will include using four hundred thousand additional in revolving funds. And then the school committee needs to vote the approval of the reduced budget. So just to your point earlier, that's, again, this all-funds budget approach, the four hundred thousand additional came from revolving to, to match that number, but the bottom-line number never changed, whereas we essentially dipped further into revolving funds with that additional four hundred thousand to meet that target number. That, that was in our discussion tonight, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that wasn't an add-on in addition to.
And did you also have a clarification about the circuit breaker money? I, I just heard you say that that's not guaranteed. That, did I hear you wrong?
I don't, I, I just wanted to clarify that before we move into the discussion of chapter seventy money for next year, which we don't yet know the certain amount for. But the circuit breaker money, you know, that number fluctuates year to years based on actual services. Obviously, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet. But also, we budget that, so the general description that I've heard is that this account is held as a reserve. We do carry forward one year of it, but that's best practice. It doesn't mean that we have an extra year, it just means it gives us more time to plan for that expenditure, as opposed to having a bonus surplus year. It just gives us time to anticipate and budget for it. It's not couch cushion money, if you will. And those expenses, we already know, are going to well exceed the extraordinary expenses which you get a small portion of reimbursement for through the circuit breaker program, which is why legislators have routinely called for the amount of circuit breaker reimbursement to be increased. So it's, it's a bit misleading to use the circuit breaker fund as if it's a special education fund there for a rainy day. It's not at all. It's our bread and butter, and we use it to ensure that quality programs are in place because they're legally required of us, and in fact, they well exceed the circuit breaker funds that we have available.
So may I respond?
Yes, you still have the floor.
The, I will start from what you most recently said. So the circuit breaker monies that we received is actually two hundred and twenty-five thousand each quarter. So we have two more payments coming in that, if the most, if the second quarter payment for FY twenty hasn't been received yet. So that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We do know that, that is guaranteed money for the balance of the year, it's in the state-approved budget already. The four hundred thousand that we voted as a school committee to add to the nineteen three is, is part of the all-funds budget of twenty-three or twenty-four million. I've forgotten what it is at this point. So we have those funds already earmarked and may or may not have been expended. The, the point, one of the points I'm trying to make is that we have, we have revenue coming in in the next six months, and we have somewhere around two hundred, two point one or two point four million dollars expected in this budget that's currently running. The circuit breaker funds, back to circuit breaker, you are compelled by law to spend everything you received from the year before. With this budget, you have not utilized all those funds. There is approximately a hundred and eighty thousand that was not used from circuit breaker, which has to be spent by the end. So it's not transferred, it's not planned, it's not in the budget. That's one of the reasons I'm requesting the hundred and eighty thousand dollars to fully fund the paras. I'd rather put the money in the classroom to drive student interest than have it in the bank.
But mayor, just because it has.
To derive interest from our money.
We're not going to derive interest from it. If it was unspent, it would be swept by the Department of Revenue and would go to the city, and you know that as well as anyone else. But I've already had conversations with the school business manager about making sure that each contract is encumbered to the appropriate line. So just because something hasn't yet been attributed to the correct account, doesn't mean the expenses aren't already there. We're seeing a, a very low balance in the general fund. That may well be because an eligible special education expense is being tagged to the wrong account, which is artificially depressing the general fund, but making it look like circuit breaker funds are available. So this conversation is to bring forward the, the information, but really what we're waiting for is a reconciliation in munis between city hall and the school accounts, so that they're trued up, and that the circuit breaker has to be used as allowed by law, you're correct, and we have to use it for eligible special education expenses, which we have right now. They are budgeted and they are known, and honestly, to say otherwise is not accurate.
Mayor Martin, I see Susan's hand, are you?
I'm okay for now.
Okay. Member Hollins.
On this extremely confusing subject of circuit breaker.
Not that confusing.
I'd just like to say that if we are getting more money this year, you mentioned two hundred and twenty-five thousand in four quarterly payments. What that means is, last year, we had an increase in extremely expensive students, and unless they moved out of district every year after, we've got these extremely expensive students, so we should be figuring out programs. Circuit breaker, you have to wait a whole year for the year to conclude, to find out how much did you spend on the thirty-five children that cost over a hundred thousand or whatever that threshold is. But you have to finish a year, then the special ed director sends student by student every cent to justify that, and then in the next year, you get a certain amount of reimbursement, like, I'm making this up, like, it's something like seventy-five percent of everything you spend over forty thousand. But you're a year behind.
Exactly.
So if that amount is increasing, it means the number of really expensive students we're serving went up.
That's right.
And they didn't go away at the end of the year. So that's not like a new grant program or something, we're being reimbursed for extraordinary costs that we had the year before. And since that number goes up and down and up and down, and it's so volatile, it's the number I referred to, and I said, this is the most important, we should have a whole meeting on that one line item, that's where districts sink, because they have four hundred thousand they didn't anticipate, and they have no savings for it. That's why you take that year that's coming in this year, those four, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payments, and you bank them this year, and that's the money we use in our budget next year, and then whatever we submitted this year, that money will come in next year for those. But if, but the point I want to make is, if the amount we're getting each quarter goes up, means that last year, we had more of these really expensive students, and they're probably here this year, and that's why the budget goes up.
That's right.
Once you catch on to how that fits into our budget, and why we bank eight hundred thousand, the, the money comes in this year, we hold it, spend it next year. The districts that don't do that are the districts that go bankrupt, and that's why you don't want to divert from that practice. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. I think that's really helpful, that has been on my mind, and it's not even, even using the term "bank" is a little bit problematic, because it gives people the wrong idea about what it actually is, and, and we are budgeting for future expenses based on the enrollments that we had the past year, and you're exactly right, you, I think you explained it very well. Are there any questions from other members, any comments? Mayor Martin, I saw your hand, I do have a, a comment at some point, but I want to get to everybody first.
Okay, so just to provide some examples of balances of accounts. We've heard me speak in the past about continuing balance, opening balance. So we'll just take, we'll take the special student tuition account. So, on June thirtieth, that's our fiscal year close, in two thousand and sixteen, we had four hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. On June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, we had five hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. On June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, we had five hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. The available balance on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen was six hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and two dollars. The available balance on October thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen, just a couple months ago, was six hundred and sixty-two thousand, eighty-one dollars. My point is that money's all been in the bank, it hasn't been in the classroom. So we've carried those high balances in that account year after year after year after year. The same situation occurs with, say, school choice. In two thousand and sixteen, we had one point three million dollars. In two thousand and seventeen, we had one point one seven eight million dollars. In two thousand and eighteen, we had one point one two million dollars. And June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen, we had seven hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And October of thirty-first of this year, we had seven hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. So that's slightly down from the, from the million, but we know we have five hundred and sixty-five thousand from the revenue, from FY twenty. My point again is that money has been in the bank and not in the classroom. The preschool tuition, the munis fund fifteen oh nine, in two thousand and sixteen, the balance was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. The balance in two thousand and seventeen was three hundred and thirty thousand.
I think you should make your point, we don't have those numbers in front of us, and all of those things actually, where?
They were sent to you as part of the, you get a copy from.
Oh, is it under here? Are you moving on to the next agenda item? Is that what you're referring to?
City clerk's office is part of the packet for the city councilors, and I sent it to the, all the members through you.
So we're not on that agenda item yet? Likewise, all of those numbers actually can be true, while simultaneously, the idea of us banking that money or holding on to that money is not true. These are revolving funds. This is money coming in and out that we are budgeting for, and you even mentioned how our choice funding is, or our choice number had decreased, and that's because we continue to budget for it in our annual budget. If you want to wrap up your thought on this, I see member Hollins waiting patiently.
Sure. So my final point, I'll repeat again, is that there are monies available that can be used to fund the unit C contract, and I know that's, we're going to talk about that next, but with the revelation that the incumbences that were listed on our budget are off by one point four million dollars possibly, we should seriously consider about satisfying the needs of the unit C members.
Member Hollins, oh, I'm sorry, actually, member Hollins, member Action had her hand up a moment ago. Member Action first, and then member Hollins.
Point of order?
Yes.
This is not the topic that we are on currently.
Thanks. Member Hollins.
Just a couple of points. Whoever's the mayor will always have different reports on finances than we have. It's a different municipal office, looking at money a different way. That's why I think as a city-school district, we must have a finance committee, because this isn't a good use of our time, to sit with reports we can't look at.
Point of order?
Yes.
We're not on topic.
Thank you.
Why aren't we, we're talking about the budget update?
We're talking about the budget update, not whether or not we have a budget or a finance subcommittee, which we've mentioned before, will be, that the work of the school committee will be organized in January with the new committee anyway, so I'm not sure why we would discuss it at all.
Well, I want to respond to what the mayor had a long time to talk about. And that is, we're getting a new report on budget, but what will help? We had four or five meetings on the format we wanted for revolving funds, and we all agreed, if we could just get the revolving funds, which we got last time, the way we wanted, when we talk about this in our budget update, it won't be so confusing.
Excuse me, the, the format you had requested was a one-time thing? This format has been exactly the same, but I'm, I'm, I understand where you're coming from and wanting the forward, going forward, what's going to be spent, so that, that would be, you know, something that.
Well, my point is, the mayor has all of these documents, which I haven't seen, I like budget detail, I don't know what he's talking about, because I don't have it, and the school committee has a vote on, and we, including the mayor, on how we want to look at revolving funds in our budget updates. I'm just asking, when we do that, all of this, we don't get all these different reports, we have something to reference.
Is there anyone other than Mayor Martin that would like to speak before we move back to Mayor Martin? This is consistent with our practice. Okay, Mayor Martin?
Just briefly, I want to repeat that the, the documents were sent to, were sent to the school department, and to the chair by way of the city clerk, and the superintendent.
So I'll emphasize.
The request from the chair was to send in those four sheets.
I'll emphasize that this is actually, the mayor was moving on to the next agenda item in advance, or I'm sorry, prematurely. So we have these two pages here that were included in the packet, and they do include some past balances. It doesn't, it's, we're going to wait on that, because we're not there yet? Okay. So, these reports are very concerning to me. I'm, I'm hearing you say that there's likely to be an error. It's difficult for me to move forward with confidence that there is an encumbrance error. I'm not sure what's happening, I'm not sure what's happening in our office, in other places, perhaps at the city. I don't have familiar with how everything gets inputted into munis and, you know, what happens behind the scenes. I just want to support you in finding a solution in this. It's very important for us to have accurate budget information. I see these numbers, and I get very upset. You know, my heart will race, and I'll, you know, and, so it, it's helpful to me to hear you say, I think it is an issue here. However, I don't feel as confident as the mayor in thinking that we have one point four million dollars just kind of assigned to the wrong line, right? Or the wrong account. So in thinking, it's difficult for me to say, okay, maybe actually it's one point nine that we have as a current balance. I cannot sit here and feel confident in that number. I don't want to sound like unnecessarily alarming. I do believe that work is going on between you and the city, or the schools in the city, to figure out what's going on. There could be other things happening here. There could be more expenses that we are not aware of. So, I just want to make that point very, very clear, because when I see a report like this, it's finals week, I'm already freaking out, about have a heart attack.
No, I, I hear you.
So, I, I, also another thing, not just you, it's been many years that we have been working through this munis transition. We've had multiple turnovers, not only at the city, we've had changes in staffing at the, at the school side. I just want to say, as, as a whole, to the committee, to the committee members coming in, we really need to shore this up. It's also my understanding that, you know, munis is a, is a little bit of a bear, and there's a lot to learn, so I understand, I get all of those pieces. I think that, I made my point? At some point, I will probably offer the new committee members some ideas about budget reporting, as member Hollins wants to get into, but I won't go there right now. You said, I just want to reflect this back to you, you said that you have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the seventeenth, that's the day after our meeting, at which point, hopefully, by the end of the day, there may be a better understanding of actual account balances, or what may have gone wrong, gotten accounted for twice, or whatever has happened. Okay. Do you feel pretty confident that after Tuesday, after sitting down with the city and having a focused effort, that you all will have a thorough understanding?
Munis, let me, let me backtrack here. I, I understand your concern, and, and, you know, it rightfully so. However, there are a lot of issues within the munis system, especially going forward with the personnel piece of it. For years and years and years, you were running two systems independently of one another, which frankly is a recipe for disaster. Luckily, no disasters happened, but that, that is a recipe for disaster. Now it's a consolidated system. However, the consolidation. However, the consolidated system is not perfect at this point, and the reason is, is because it was implemented mid-year. I was not around for any of this. So I want to be clear about that. I was not here for any of this. Last year's budget, I was not here for any of it. Last year's budget contained a multitude of issues regarding... There were pieces of that budget that were revolving accounts that had no label to it. "We're going to use $50,000 in revolving account," and... From where? Nobody knew where. So I spent last year trying to put together this budget, trying to solve this budget, and then trying to balance it budget, which it did balance last year. So, you know, I could have gone into the Munis system and fixed this up to make it look pretty, but that's not good practice. So you're seeing this warts and all. And I agree with you that it's concerning. But I come to you with that concern and a solution. So, you know, to be admonished publicly like this really is thwarting... And frankly, it hurts. It hurts that I'm trying to do a good job. I have been significantly ill for the past two months, with cough, bronchitis, walking pneumonia, and I'm sorry. I just was not able to get to this. And I understand that. And the superintendent is shaking her head that, yes, this is concerning. You know, what does that say to me as an employee going forward? You know, it really, really is concerning. I agree. We are going to fix it. We are going to move forward. You will be happy with the result. I am 100% positive of that going forward. However, this... And I'm going to stop there.
Steve, thank you for your response, and I'm sorry if it sounded as if I was attacking you. I am expressing my concern, and I appreciate you clarifying the timeline and other considerations. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I want to... Could I make a clarifying comment?
Yes, and then I saw Member Hollins and Mayor Martin here.
One of my specific concerns is that we don't jump to conclusions based on this report and fund a contract based on a mental arithmetic done tonight in estimation of a correction that has not yet occurred. So I have full confidence that Steve, working with the city finance office, with my help, with the support of others, is going to make any adjustments to true up the balances based on an encumbrance issue that the city has been aware of and working on, and Steve's been aware of and working on. So I do want to caution us against making leaps to what this means for a change in practice as it relates to the next agenda item. That's what I was addressing. Um... No, I'm sorry. I'm feeling bad. Hope you're better soon.
Yeah, I just... I want to emphasize that the finance manager for the city and the business manager for the school department have been working on this for a couple, two or three, four weeks. So this isn't just dropped on them. They've noticed it. They're trying to work it out. They've come to some good conclusions and a solution for... A path for a solution to take care of this, as Steve has mentioned. So this is in the process. This is not mental math, and the superintendent should understand that. This is real math, and it's real important to the city to have the proper allocations of funds from the areas in which it can be supported.
So we've already dabbled in the next agenda item, I think. Yes, the next agenda item is the mayoral financial order for the Unit C contract. It is the recommendation of our attorney that we first start an executive session in relation to this contract. I do believe that there is some public discussion that may need to be had related to this. As you know, these items, some of the figures that the mayor was throwing out earlier, that's all public information. I see Member Ekstrom.
I actually would like to make a motion to strike this from our agenda. We, as a school committee, we asked the mayor to... Actually, directed the mayor to request full funding from the city council, consistent with best practice. The mayor, going back and doing his calculations, presenting this to us, is in direct opposition to what we, as the elected officials, directed him to do.
A second.
Okay. Any... Did you want to speak to your motion further?
No, I think that's pretty clear.
Do you want to speak to your second?
Yeah, I... No, I guess not. I just... Just to say the same, it's just... It's so obviously directly against what we moved on as a committee, so I'm not... I wasn't even sure how we would discuss this item, given that we had, you know, passed a motion in the past that went really against what Mayor Martin is proposing.
Did you just say that you wanted to speak?
No.
Okay. Susan, and then Bill?
Yes. I don't know which part of this might be executive session, but I do want to comment on the second... I'll call it the second paragraph. "The mayor further recommends a school committee vote to use the school department revolving accounts to fully fund the balance contract as follows." And then there are three funds here with amounts, and when we discussed this at our meeting, we had a long discussion, and we talked about... I think we specifically voted this account and this much money. And I have issue with... And what... I have a question, and then I want to say my issue. Were there meetings somewhere that weren't school committee meetings, or where this was decided, this other... What you're recommending here came up? Or was this just your thought about it personally? I mean, was there...
Did a question through the chair to me?
Through... I'm just... You know, there are other meetings that go on. I'm just wondering, how did this come up, that someone is recommending... You're recommending $20,000 of preschool tuition. So that's... I do have a question, if there were more meetings, but I want to say, I'm completely against this. We should not be tinkering with all these funds and setting... We're here to support the children of the school system, and we have to look at these funds, not the city council, and decide which ones we have to use for what. And the city council shouldn't be voting to use preschool tuition. We have a whole issue with preschool and how we fund it. And we had a whole discussion on which revolving funds we could afford to take money from and still keep our own budget stable. And this sets a precedent of this... Of starting to make decisions, except the other bodies making decisions about our revolving funds. It's a terrible precedent. And this whole issue of funding contracts through our revolving funds, that sets a precedent. And it should be clear that what we're doing is not funding a contract, anything out of here. We're taking money out of... We're taking some money out of our revolving stabilization accounts to put in our budget to displace something else, to... In order to have money for the contract. But this whole situation's so unusual, to start tinkering more, particularly getting involved in preschool tuition, which can only be used for preschool tuition. This is very upsetting. I don't know where it came from, and it's not a good recommendation for the city council to start directing the school committee what to do with its funds, and I don't even think it's legal, but it's a bad idea, and it's concerning to me. But the mayor trying to figure it out is not concerning to me, because I think it's challenging for any mayor to try to figure this out. But this is concerning to me.
Mayor, you had your hand up?
Sure. Well, to answer Member Hollins's question, the... All available funds were looked at to fund... To fully fund the Unit C contract. I would ask the chair to have the stenographer, Susan, read the motion that was approved by the school committee.
Sure. Susan Ekstrom just read it.
It's in the November 13th meeting.
Susan Ekstrom has it up, I think, in her book.
Can I have it up, Susan?
Unit C contract. GJ moved that we... Excuse me. GJ moved that we ratify the Unit C contract as negotiated and direct the mayor to request full funding from the city council, consistent with best practice.
I think it was amended for past practice.
Consistent with past practice.
We heard best practice, so just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. So to address that motion, the financial order presented to the city council was to fully fund the Unit C contract.
How so, mayor?
The financial states...
The financial order is requesting $169,000 out of the special education stabilization account, and recommending the school committee a vote. And the council is not able to direct the school committee to spend in any particular way.
No. So the... That's why it's before the school committee. So if the school committee intends on funding the Unit C contract, this is the pathway to do so. The school committee approves the selection of funds totaling $180,000 from those three accounts, special tuition, school choice, and preschool tuition. All are legally available to be spent on the Unit C contract. Without the vote of the school committee, the process will indicate that the council can't fully fund the Unit C contract on its own with $169,099, which is from the special ed... Special ed stabilization account of the city. So therefore, there will be no additional financial order to meet the fully funding of the Unit C contract. I've tried to explain, and we put into the... All of the information that those accounts have money. Those accounts have funds. The sky falling is not going to be affected by $180,000, particularly when the...
Point of order? Yes. What's your point?
The motion is to strike this topic from our agenda.
Thank you. There is a motion on the table.
So I'll address that directly, then. By striking this topic, stifling communication and dialogue, not allowing the factual information for this account and the contract to come out is a, I think, a cowardly act by the school committee.
I don't believe that any information has been stifled. Okay. So I see a couple of different hands. I saw Member Hollins earlier, and then over here, both of you were about at the same time, so... Okay. So we'll start with Member Hollins, then we'll go with Member Johnson, and hear from the superintendent.
To the motion, I don't think we should strike this, because we've got to work out something with the city, and it's now public information how much money is needed, or at least there's something in the paper. There's a number in the newspaper saying how much is needed to fund it. I don't think we should stifle conversation, but maybe we could structure it.
Member Johnson.
I move to call the question.
Okay. So we first vote on calling the question. There's no debate on calling the question. All those in favor of calling the question? And opposed? And abstention? Motion carries to call the question. We... The motion... Could you read the motion to us, please?
To strike this topic from our agenda.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We will strike this topic from our agenda. Okay. So we do have some executive session business. Several items. So we'll entertain a motion to... For the record, I do believe it's likely that we will come back into public session with a vote. I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for reasons number three, seven, and 10, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating body... Position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. This... And to discuss trade secrets or confidential competitively sensitive or other proprietary information. The main topics are Unit C, potential litigation, review of executive session minutes. The time period is October 9th, 2013, through March 12th, 2018, and also Greenfield Middle School parking. Could somebody move that? Moved by Member Hollins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Yes.
This doesn't qualify for open for executive session. Violation of open meeting.
What?
Unit C contract discussions are ratified and voted, and the contract is an assistance. It doesn't have a negotiation or litigation potential.
Those are actually... So I just want to say, those are actually two separate items. I listed them all at once. And you may be right that we may not need to discuss Unit C, given we just struck it from our agenda. So I appreciate the clarification. We will revise the motion. Attorney Smith, is that accurate? There's no need to discuss anything related to Unit C in executive session at this time, given we just struck the public item from the agenda?
Yeah. Your right.
Okay. So we will modify the original motion. Thank you, Mayor Martin.
I just have a question, procedural question.
Sure.
Given that we switch mayors in two weeks, and the mayor-elect is in the audience, is there a precedent for inviting anyone into executive session? I'm just curious.
I'm not aware of that for something like this. So... Okay. So there is a motion that was moved... Susan Farber, was that moved by Member Hollins? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Ekstrom. Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Uh... Yeah, sorry. Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Martin?
No.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
And myself. We have a quorum.
Thank you. So we will convene an executive session and come back. Hi, everyone. We are back from executive session. It is 10:42 PM, and we do have a public vote for you, related to the Greenfield Middle School parking. Susan Farber, if you could read the language for us, please?
The motion was to affirm the contract between the Roman Catholic Bishop of Springfield and the city of Greenfield, as written, and add an affirmation line to be signed by the school committee chair. This is moved by Member Karen and seconded by Member Hollins.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is unanimous. We will clean up that document and make the change and move forward. Thank you, everyone. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right. I think that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.